Okay.
Okay, well, welcome to the joint meeting of the Doylestown Township and Borough Planning Commissions. And we're here to discuss 280 North Broad Street. I think just if we could go like around, I don't know, is everybody the same format on their screen? All the little boxes? No?
No way.
I don't know how this works. How do we all introduce ourselves?
Well, I think we all just have to start talking and then eventually.
Okay, James, you're on.
I'm James Lannan. I'm the Vice Chair of Doylestown Borough Planning Commission.
Okay, I'm Judy Henderson.
I'm Gus Pareya.
And I'm the Chair of the Doylestown Township Planning Commission.
And I'm Gus Pareya. Here we go. And I'm the Chair of the Doylestown Borough Planning Commission.
And I'm Greg Repa. I'm the Vice Chair of the Doylestown Township Planning Commission.
I'm Ted Goldstein, one Doylestown Township.
I'm Jill McCauley, a member of the Doylestown Township Planning Commission.
I'm Kelso Doylestown Township Planning Commission.
I'm Jen Herring. I'm the Doylestown Township Supervisor, co- liaison to the Planning Commission.
I'm Ron Strauss.
You went, you muted yourself.
I did that on purpose. I'm Ron Strauss. I'm the Mayor of Doylestown Borough.
I'm Jack O'Brien. I'm the President of the Borough Council for Doylestown Borough.
I'm Nancy Santa Cecilia. I'm also the liaison and Doylestown Township Supervisor.
Joe Frederick, a member of Doylestown Borough Council.
Heather Mahaly, a member of the Doylestown Borough Planning Commission.
Judy Stern Goldstein, Doylestown Township Planning Consultant.
I'm Lisa Green on Doylestown Borough Planning Commission.
How about Matt?
I'm Matt Hammond. I am with Traffic Planning Design. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Duckworth.
Jason, we know who you are.
I'll hold off on introducing myself until everyone else has had a chance.
Kim, Kim, you're muted.
Hi, yes, my name is Larry Derogopian. I'm a resident of Doylestown Borough.
Okay, thank you, Kim.
I'm Ben Bell, Doylestown Borough Council.
I'm John Davis. I'm the Borough Manager in Doylestown.
And how about Doug over there? Doug Zindel?
Doug's, he's a resident of Doylestown Borough. Doug, you there?
You're muted.
He's muted. Yep.
Yes, Karen and Doug Ziegel, we live in Belvedere, right across the street from where Jason's complex will ultimately end up.
Okay. Phil, don't be bashful. You're muted.
Phil, I'm your Doylestown Borough Plan Director.
Karen Highland, where are you? You haven't said a word.
I'm Karen Highland, Doylestown Borough Building and Zoning Director.
Miss anybody?
Noni West, Doylestown Borough Council.
Hi, hi, Noni.
And I'm Sinclair Salisbury, Director of Code Enforcement at Doylestown Township.
Claire, how are you?
Also known as Stephanie Mason. You gotta change your name there, Sinclair.
Does it say Stephanie?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll call you Sinclair.
Okay, I'm standing in for Stephanie.
And Wendy Margolis, Doylestown Borough Council.
Oh, great.
Oh, hi, Wendy.
Hi.
All right, how about everybody?
Oh, I'm Leila Yusuf. I'm a Doylestown resident and excited about this project.
Hi, Leila. Where do you live?
I live in Sandy Knoll Drive, 35 Sandy Knoll Drive.
Okay, that's, that's close to this project.
Yes, we just, we take the North Broad Street all the time when we are going to Philadelphia for work and New York City, so thank.
Okay, great. Well, welcome, everybody. And I guess we'll dive right into this. With, do you guys want to do your, are you doing a presentation? Is that how this is set up?
Hi, Judy, hi, this is Kelly McGowan. How are you?
Hi, Kelly.
I did not jump in on the introductions. Hi, everybody.
Sorry.
Kelly, good to see you.
How you doing?
Good.
Good. Here tonight representing Jason and Arcadia. So, yes, we do have a presentation prepared for you. We can, I see no reason not to dive right into it. Just for purposes of introduction, it, as I heard you all say when we got here, this would be a great meeting to have in person. But I think we're doing the best we can. And it's really, it's kind of cool to see everybody here at the same time. Jason is under contract for 280 North Broad Street, as most of you probably know. Location of the property, again, I'm sure you know, Broad Street across the street from what is the Intelligencer property, across the street, just slightly offset from Atkinson Drive. Project Jason's going to be presenting to you this evening is an apartment mixed-use project, project he's excited about. The Doylestown Borough, Doylestown Township interplay on this project is really interesting. The township property and the borough property probably from my perspective couldn't be any different in terms of both the character of the properties, the location of the properties. The township property is vacant, is wooded, much different from the borough property, fronting on North Broad Street. That is the improved Tilly property, really commercial industrial property. So putting these properties together into, into an integrated development is, is a, an interesting planning project. So that's why I think it's important everybody's together. Obviously, you both have your different processes, township process, borough process, but hopefully we can, we can come together and, and help each other. So I know we skipped Jason's introduction. Jason, if you want to go ahead and introduce yourself and, and kind of let everybody know what you're looking to do.
Well, good evening, everyone. Kelly, thank you. And thanks to all of you for coming out at dinnertime on a Thursday night. I'm Jason Duckworth. I'm the President of Arcadia Land Company. I've had the chance many times over the last several years to connect with members of the Doylestown Borough community. And I'm just now getting to know the Doylestown Township community. I will have to admit that I've never before met with a joint session of planning commissions. It's not often that developers pursue properties that straddle the municipal boundary. But, so this very well may constitute the largest assemblage of planning commissioners that I've ever had the pleasure of interacting with. So thanks for all of you. I actually think Zoom may be the only venue through which this assemblage would possibly fit into the same space. I'm trying to imagine the special quarters we would need to reserve if we were meeting in person, but thank you. I do have a PowerPoint and I am joined by my traffic planning consultant, Matt Hammond, who will offer some remarks. So if I can share my screen, I will begin the presentation.
Jason, I've got to thank you for the, the materials that you did submit already. It was very informative.
Oh, well, good. I'm glad I'm going to be going through much the same material tonight. So I hope that we have a chance to answer your questions. And I did notice that the host has disabled sharing. So if, the person who is in charge of that.
Sinclair, you're muted.
That, thank you. That would be me. So let me see, what do I hit? Share screen?
Share screen.
And there should be an option for multiple users to share their screen.
I think what you need to do is make Jason a co-host or something like that in order for him to share.
There you go.
Have you got it?
Well, we're seeing your screen, Sinclair, I think.
Well, that's not much good.
You want to in, in either enable sharing by others or create someone else as a co-host, depending which version of Zoom is on your computer.
I think you can X out of that, yeah.
If you go back to your Zoom icon on the bottom of your screen.
Yep.
You'll see there's a green and red bar.
Yep.
You could hit Stop Share. That's first step.
Is that it?
You're still, you're still sharing there. You see the red that, that.
Yeah, a little red and green bar.
Yeah, you should click that and it should, you should see a tab.
So you can see my screen?
Yes, we can see, yes. Don't show us any emails.
Yeah.
It's, it's around the edges of your Zoom. The platform, if you're, if you make sure you're in Zoom, you've clicked on Zoom and you're live in Zoom, that should come up on the bottom. So just click the right, the right option. Just click right there. Just click. And now.
It disappears. Yeah.
So click on the people.
Stop Share.
Yes. So now you're going to see the same option to share your screen, but there should be a little like V, upside down V on the right-hand arrow.
Yep.
And you should be.
Multiple.
Yes. And there's one that says.
Multiple participants.
There's another option down below that allows anyone. It says only hosts can share. And then there's another dot that says anyone can share.
Multiple participants can share. That'll work.
That'll do it.
Is that good?
Yes.
Sorry about the snafu there. Oh, not at all. It works, it works right now. All right.
All right.
Well, Sinclair, thank you very much. And let me just confirm, everyone can see my screen, which says 280 North Broad Street with an aerial map behind it? Yes.
Yes.
All right, outstanding. So tonight I'm going to be sharing with you a concept. I, I, I reserve the word plan for when we've actually made a formal submission. So I appreciate your willingness to gather to really talk about something that is truly at its earliest stage. And so therefore, this is the best time for us to get the benefit of your feedback, to get the benefit of your insights. I certainly am of the view that our project concepts can only improve through meetings like this and feedback from the community. So tonight we're truly all ears. So what, what you see here is our first slide is of course, an aerial photograph of the borough. And you can see the site located here in the red dot at North Broad Street. Going to the next image, this is the view of the 280 North Broad Street property. Some of us know it more commonly as Tilly Fire Extinguisher. I've attempted to show some of the parcel lines here with the red lines. The vantage point that this photograph is taken from is this, it would be as if you're standing at the intersection of North Broad and Atkinson. So there's a gravel lot in the foreground and then a single-story 1970s-era industrial building located there more to the west. As you can see, there are some trees at the back of the property. So the front piece is in fact in Doylestown Borough. And where the trees begin is approximately where Doylestown Township's jurisdiction begins. These are some additional photographs of the existing condition. The upper left, of course, is another vantage of the same, of the existing building. We have an interior shot. And as you can see, much of the improved area is a gravel parking lot. There are some shipping containers that have been left in the back by the prior user, as well as some debris such as pallets that have been left. The, the woodlands that you can see particularly noticeable in the lower right, it's a relatively young woodland. The land was farmed as recently as the mid 20th century. So there's some aerial photography suggesting that it began to fill in as woodlands about the 1960s. So this map shows the municipal boundary going right through the red dot, which underscores the fact that we are together as two municipalities this evening. And so though this property may be legally at the very edge of Doylestown Borough, as the crow flies and as a pedestrian might walk, the distance to the center of historic Doylestown is actually not very far. We often look at the earliest stage of our projects at this website called Walk Score. And it's a free website where you can plug in any address, including your home address. And this website has an, as an algorithm which attempts to weigh different characteristics of a location, such as its proximity to shopping, or restaurants, or transit, or other services, to try to come up with some value for the walkability of a location. And it's on a scale of one to 100. So this site, though it is in some ways a forlorn industrial property, is actually, actually has a very high walk score. It's a short distance to the center of Doylestown Borough. It's also a relatively short distance to the Doylestown Shopping Center. Turning to the next slide, this is a tax parcel map provided by Bucks County. And you can see that the property is actually today subdivided as two tax parcels. The smaller parcel is here in the borough. It's about three quarters of an acre. And the larger parcel, about a little, a little more than three acres, is in the township. The, the property has a relatively narrow frontage. It's about 150 feet wide, but the property is very, very deep, more than 800 feet in depth. In this, in this slide, I'm showing you the Doylestown Township zoning map. So this irregular shape is of course the boundary of Doylestown Township. And you'll see in the upper left, a purple finger. It's this very funny appendage to Doylestown Township, which juts into the land of the borough. And the enlarged image that you see on the right side here of the slide shows its zoning. So it's zoned LI, which I believe stands for Limited Industrial. And in fact, this property, the Tilly property, is the last parcel at the end of, of this appendage. This is looking at it from the borough's standpoint. So the zoning excerpt here on the right from the borough zoning map shows the, the project site. I've here highlighted the township portion that lies, of course, outside the borough. And here you can just see the, the blue polygon I had slide into place. And that represents the borough portion, which is in the borough's central industrial district. So, you know, as you can see from this single view with the township on the left and the borough on the right, the existing land use pattern has clearly historically been industrial. And even to this day, the zoning still enshrines industrial uses as the permitted use. So more, about 30 years ago, just shy of 30 years ago, the township and the borough actually came together to look at this corridor of Doylestown Borough. There was a realization that this area, though most of it is technically in the borough, was of significance to both the township and the borough. Of course, it's whether you're a township resident or a borough resident, you're, you're driving on North Broad Street. And the blight was clearly something that many people found displeasing. So back in this period of time, there was a heavily industrial pattern. And in 1997, when the borough did their comprehensive plan, they, they talked about a series of public visioning workshops. And I've attempted to highlight here, under the second bullet, what was, was done through these workshops. And the conclusion was that what might be best for North Broad Street would be for a harmonious mix, including new residential, commercial, and office uses with open space. And that that could create an ideal balance within the corridor. And apparently, these concepts were tested with different groups of the public and residents, and this came out on top. A few years later, in year 2000, there was an additional joint effort between the township and the borough. Want to thank Stephanie Mason and Karen Highland for locating the study for me from 2000, where the Bucks County Planning Commission was commissioned to look at developing guidelines for the development of this, of this corridor. And I'll highlight again, just one of many things that they said about this area, that business loss has led to both a certain element of blight associated with the long-term presence of vacant property. And it has also slightly changed the historic character of the general area with newer uses, replacing, for example, EG residential, replacing non-residential uses steadily over time. So going back decades, there has been a vision of a different North Broad Street. I have to share this slide. I thought this was funny. This is from year 2000, what the Bucks County Planning Commission thought was the good, the bad, and the ugly. So the Intelligencer was thought to be the good. And of course, that building is no more. Philadelphia Rivet and Tilly. So what we think of is the Fred Beans property there at Doyle Street and North Broad, those warehouse buildings. That was once Philadelphia Rivet. Our property is Tilly. So Bucks County Planning Commission thought that was the bad. But PennDOT gets the award for being the ugly. And I think for those of us who remember its state before its recent transformation into the new Gateway Park, I think we would certainly agree. So here on this plan, I'm going to try to show you, if we were to roll back the clock about 20 years, what this corridor looked like in 2000. And then in turn, show you how it's been transformed and how the vision that was laid out in the 1990s has in large part been realized. So if you can see, going diagonally from upper left to lower right, that's North Broad Street. You can see the interchange with Route 611, the bypass there on the left. And then, of course, what's shown in the yellow color is North, North Main Street. But the predominant pattern was industrial or blighted property or vacant property. So Car Tech, of course, was, that property had not yet been redeveloped. The Intel Site, PennDOT, Mrs. Paul's was there. I'm not sure if they were still making fish sticks, but that was located there, adjoining North Main Street. The county-owned property there on the, what would be the, the west side that had yet been transformed. The Fred Beans building was still there. And of course, Tilly and Car Tech and other of these properties shown in brown. But of course, a pattern had begun to emerge that was residential. And that dates back arguably even to the 1970s, where Center Square Towers, Wesley Enhanced Living, and the residential community here on Sandy Ridge Drive is shown. And in that state, these visioning workshops concluded that this part of town was the community's least favorite. So bringing the clock up to year 2020, let me show you how much has changed, which of course you know from your own observations living in the community. But Car Tech became Lantern Hill. And Mrs. Paul's became Belvedere. And both these communities were innovative, traditional neighborhood developments. The county, of course, made a major investment in the courthouse complex, including a thousand-car parking garage, open to the public, located at Doyle and North Broad. The borough spearheaded grant applications that funded significant improvements to gateway elements to the streetscape of North Broad, including, as you can see here in the lower left, beautiful intersection improvements there, adjoining at Doyle and North Broad, but adjoining the future Gateway Park. Of course, the park is now being realized. The borough is well on its way to transforming the PennDOT building into its new municipal hall. Another developer has made a proposal for the Intel property, which has been going on for some time. And so I'm here tonight, though, to talk about what I hope is the next piece of the puzzle, which is the Tilly property. So when we begin our process at Arcadia to think about what might be a good fit for a given property, we like to turn to history. And one of our favorite resources is the Library of Congress website, where there's all these wonderful historic maps available in an online archive. And the map here on the left side of the slide is from 1876. And back then, North Broad Street was in fact Dutch Lane. You can see that on the right side of North Main, it was, it was actually called Broad, but in this section, it was Dutch Lane. And our property is located in this little corner that was cut out in the lower left of that 1876 map. So we believe that that yellow highlighted line is the municipal boundary. So our property, at least the frontage of our property, we believe was part of Henry Long's old brickyard, which was across the street from William Voe's brickyard. And most likely, that concentration of, of brickyards, it's something to do with the clay soils in the area. The image on the right is from 1922. And that's a Sanborn map that I've actually turned upside down to give it the same orientation as the, as the image on the left. But likely, our property was here on the left side of it. And so you can see evidence of these older industrial buildings, some of which don't exist to this day. So we kind of fed this into the architect's hopper. Like, why don't you give some thought to, you know, the brick heritage of this area and to this, you know, this word Dutch, which we're trying to get to the bottom of with the Doylestown Historical Society. But if anyone knows, I would be very interested to hear. Another source of inspiration in this process were other, you know, landmark industrial buildings. And of course, you can't help but think of the Ag Works Building, which for 100 years was a factory of agricultural tools, for a time, a place of where automobiles were manufactured. And, you know, to us, we really just were taken with, you know, this, the rustic simplicity of the building and the symmetry of the window patterns and the strong sort of gable form that's presented there on the street. So again, we fed this to our architects and said, please, you know, chew on this and let us know what do you think? How this might all inspire what we do at 280 North Broad Street. So the concept that I'm here to talk to you about tonight is a mixed-use development. I hope you can clearly see in the architecture immediately how Ag Works and Brick have inspired us. You know, the, the prominent chimney there shown at the top of the gable might have some resonance with, with some Dutch architectural traditions. But the notion being to have a simple brick, vaguely factory-feeling building that would have three levels of rental apartments with ground floor retail. We're envisioning about 5,600 square feet of ground floor retail space. And that this building that we call the Jewel Box would be located wholly within Doylestown Borough. The building in the back is actually a second building. And this building would be located wholly in Doylestown Township. We attempt to pick up on the architectural motif established by the Jewel Box. As you can see, this wing of the building echoes the, the gabled end of the Jewel Box. And since I shared these plans, I guess, an earlier version of these plans in December with Doylestown Planning, with Doylestown Township's Planning Commission, we've decided to bring more articulation to the building on this side, bringing the courtyard spaces more to the front to make it less monolithic. The buildings that are just shown kind of in ghosted-out form are existing buildings. So these are single-story industrial buildings, mixed-use buildings owned by Mr. Becker. And then the buildings similarly ghosted out on the left side are, are those where the Fred Beans Auto Part Facility is located. This is a close-up view of what we're hoping to bring to the streetscape of, of North Broad Street. So we have looked at the plans that have been proposed for the Intel property and have endeavored to, to mimic the pattern of on-street parking that you can see here. We're providing for wide sidewalks for pedestrians to walk into town, as well as providing for additional hardscape space for outdoor dining. So you see the umbrellas that we're showing here that would be outdoor space for the restaurant that we're. that we're hoping to recruit to this space. We're showing our primary vehicular access here on on North Broad Street. But the hope is that we're bringing enhanced materials and lots of of like vertical elements that sort of create layers of definition from the cartway so that a pedestrian feels comfortable, that there's the protection of the on-street parking, the landscaping, the planters. And that this ultimately becomes a really pleasant place to have a lunch or to walk into town. This is an image. If one were standing on the Intel property, looking to the west onto it, this is a head on view showing our front facade with the the echo facade there of the of the frontage of the township building. And this is a side view. So this this is probably your best view as to how we're going to organize the tax ratables here. So to to simplify the Bucks County assessor's job, we decided to make two separate buildings entirely. The building on the right being in the township, the building on the left being in the borough. The building on the right, the township building, will have amenity space and for the residents of our building, but will be will not have for rent commercial space. It will also contain all of our structured parking. The building on the left is a true mixed use building with the ground floor commercial that I previously mentioned. One thing you probably can see here quite clearly now is that the township building, we're proposing to be a five story building. And the borough building is proposed to just before. This bird's eye view is probably useful for helping you understand how vehicular circulation will work. So we are, if you can see my my laser pointer, vehicles would enter on this driveway. And those residents would drive down this and then enter the garage. This portion of the township building is a podium structure. So it's a concrete structure that would have ground floor parking available for both residents and for patrons of the commercial use here. Then there'll be a security gate which leads into the the private parking for the residents of the building that's located in this area. One of the things that this design affords is that the structured parking is completely inconspicuous. It is wrapped by the residential units on nearly all on all four sides of of the building. These two portions here sticking out are two wings from the building, which I mentioned earlier. We switched and brought back towards North Broad Street because we thought it improved the architecture that would be most visible to to those in the community. The lane that you see here on the right is important to highlight. This is a fire lane that we're proposing that would go down the entire length of the building and wrap around the back of the building for emergency services. This is a plan view. Again, this is the borough portion, the jewel box with the mixed use ground floor restaurant retail use, three stories of apartments. You can see here, this is the the second gable on the township building. This is the amenity area we're proposing. Outdoor amenities such as a swimming pool in the courtyard. And then this is the area with a garage that would in fact, the top level would be open to the sky. And you can see the fire lane again coming around the side. The back of the property, there is an ephemeral stream which we would we do not wish to disturb. There are woodlands. And this is an appropriate buffer because there are still, of course, active industrial uses around this property, including the Harvey Street wastewater treatment plant. So we are not blind to the fact that we are in a transitional area of the borough and that though, over the last 20 years, much has changed, we recognize that changes will continue or the legacy industrial uses will likely be here for decades more. In fact, I'm very confident that the the uses here at Fred Beans will be here for the foreseeable future. The I guess the last few topics that I like to bring up is first environmental issues. The Tilly property was originally constructed for a company called Inertial Motors. And there is some evidence of contamination associated with that use. We've had a chance, been able to characterize that. And we were very comfortable that any residual contaminants from the Tilly or the inertial motors use can be dealt with and achieved residential standards through the cooperation of the DEP. There's, we are, though, however, a neighbor to the original ChemFab property, which many of you, I'm sure are familiar with. But the ChemFab is in fact a superfund site, and there were contaminants that have spread throughout the groundwater. And so our site, in fact, has monitoring wells installed by the EPA to help the EPA monitor the cleanup of that that contamination. So we we know that there are some residual volatile organic compounds associated with that. And we've already been in touch with the EPA to try to understand that. As you might imagine, that's a chief chief due diligence topic for a developer looking to buy a property like this. And with our consultants in the EPA, I'm comfortable that we'll be able to put in place controls to manage that that contamination and and manage any deleterious effects for residential. So one hope, of course, is by redeveloping the property, we're able to actually improve the environmental status of the property. Secondly, I'd like to turn to my colleague Matt Hammond from Traffic Planning and Design. I know from our conversation with the Township Planning Commission back in December, there were many questions about about traffic impact. And so I I thought I would let Matt speak from here.
Sure. Thank you very much, Jay Jason. And good evening, everyone. Thank you for for having us this evening. As you can see from from Jason's presentation so far, he doesn't like to leave the stone unturned, which is why he reached out to me to look at the traffic aspects of the project, both vehicular and pedestrian. Based on my experience in the area and working for a couple of developments that have been referenced by Jason in his presentation. So there was, the first thing that we looked at obviously is is the as Jason has up on the slide, presentation, the road context. There's essentially three main roadways or four main roadways in and out of the borough. All of those roadways really get you to the 611 and 202 bypasses. Jason has shown the the arrows located on this map and and one of the things we want to do is give a little context with respect to traffic volumes. And everyone experiences this on a daily basis. But when you're looking at the traffic volumes, you're looking at these main corridors. It's important to keep in mind the actual amount of traffic that's traveling on these roadways to kind of look at, to gauge what kind of development can be accommodated within those certain portions of the township and the borough. So for instance, on South Main Street, traveling down towards the 202 bypass, there's approximately 10,000 vehicles on a daily basis to travel on that stretch of roadway. Conversely, on North Main Street going north out out of the borough, there's about 12,000 vehicles over the course of a day to travel that road. On State Street, down by the hospital, getting to the 611 bypass. It's about 8,500 vehicles over the course of a day. And then on Broad Street, you know, the corridor that we're looking to develop on is about 4,500 vehicles in the course of a day. So essentially, State Street, it's about twice as much traffic a day. Main Street's about two and a half times as much traffic a day. So there's really of the of the the main roadways in and out of the borough, this is is the least heavily traveled from a capacity standpoint. I'm sure many people can argue with me on that. But strictly from the numbers perspective, it does experience the least amount of volume. So Jason, can you go to the next slide, please? So what this next slide shows is an overlay of the intersection of Broad Street and Atkinson. Whereas it's being developed by the intelligence, you know, the development of the intelligencer property. And and things to notice in dealing, working with the borough, there are significant improvements that are being proposed. Not only from the vehicular standpoint, but also the pedestrian standpoint, the bicyclist standpoint. Whereas Atkinson is being centrally redesigned. There's a new vision for Atkinson. It's tough to see, but there's going to be a center median in Atkinson. There's bike lanes in both directions. There's back end parking along the proposed residential building. And and significant pedestrian amenities. The other thing that's not really clearly shown in this plan, but is part and parcel to that development is increasing the radii on the intersection at North Broad and Atkinson on both both corners. Pedestrian accommodations, that crosswalk that is shown on the top part of the intersection, I guess, on the north side of Atkinson is actually be relocated to the south closer to where the new Borough Park is proposed. And then probably the biggest change there is the signalization of that intersection. My firm, PennDOT, the borough, worked very closely on not only the borough's vision with respect to Atkinson, but making sure that was safe and could accommodate all all modes of of traffic at that intersection. There's also similar to what Jason's proposing, there's also some on-street parking proposed along Broad Street. And then some restriping to extend the left turn lane on Broad to Atkinson as well. I'm going to next slide, Jason, please. This next slide is essentially showing both the location of the intelligencer redevelopment as well as as Jason's project. One thing, and again, you'll notice the the on-street parking being proposed on both sides of Broad Street. But one thing that's that's important to note is where the driveway for Jason's project would be located in relation to the driveway proposed as part of the intelligencer project. You can see they are offset, but what's important about that is the fact that the intelligencer project is proposing to restrict the lefts out of that driveway. So you wouldn't have the normal offset where you see the conflicts with vehicles exiting driveways. Anyone coming down Broad Street could make a left into the intelligencer, or they could continue down to Atkinson and make a left. Exiting out the intelligencer driveway, you could make a right. And you can also make a right into that driveway. You just can't make a left out. Obviously, we'd be proposing a full access driveway on Broad Street. And then looking to, and again, it's tough to see, but provides some restriping in that area so that you have a left turn lane that serves Atkinson. But right behind there, there's also a left turn lane serving the the proposed driveway, which would be on the the north side or west side of the property, right against the property line. Jason, next slide, please. So as I mentioned, one of the things that Jason has us do is look at the traffic, the traffic flow on Broad Street. Obviously, as part of the presentation, you've seen the changes that have occurred on Broad Street with the residential mixed use. Those type of uses overtaking some of the old blighted industrial properties. So what this table shows or what this slide shows is eventually when we looked at the operation of the intersection and the driveway, we wanted to kind of paint a picture of how we think or what the impact of this development would be on this section of Broad Street. And so one of the things in order to get us to this point, we utilized the traffic study that was previously completed as part of the intelligencer redevelopment. It was a comprehensive study, included other development within the area that we have an effect on both Atkinson as well as Broad Street. We use that as basically the baseline, basically assuming that all of those developments were open and operating in place in 2024. And then we dumped on top of that, the traffic that would be associated with this development to kind of give us a sense of how things will operate. And what you'll see here is is, and I'll point to the the part where it says ILOS. And what that means is that's intersection level service. So essentially, it's taking all the different approaches of the intersection. It's analyzing them, it's averaging them out, saying this is how the overall intersection will work. So you'll notice that between, for instance, under weekday AMC, projected one and projected two. Or I'm sorry, actually better is is if you look at base conditions under weekday PM versus projected one. Essentially, what you'll see is there's a slight increase in delay at that intersection based on the addition of the traffic associated with the development. But again, in putting it in context, you're basically talking about additional three seconds that someone would have to wait when traveling on Broad Street on average with the addition of this development, as well as the intelligencer, as well as the former Derek Queen redevelopment in the borough and some other residential developments which were included. Let's move on to the to the next one, Jason, please. This next slide is essentially what we call the 95% top queue summary. It's really the summary of how far we anticipate traffic to back up during certain periods during the peak hours that we looked at. And you'll see that, for instance, at North Broad Street and Atkinson Drive. We have proposed the eastbound left is what we're considering, the left turn from Broad Street on the Atkinson. The available storage today, there's a 75 foot left turn lane out there, which you'll notice that during certain periods. The queue or the amount of how far the cars will stack up, it's about 100 feet. So we propose to extend that to 100 feet, which still leaves about 65 feet of stacking area for anyone that wants to make a left into Jason's property. I'd also like to point out that projected one and projected two, we looked at two development options with respect to Jason's property, which were outlined earlier in my analysis. Essentially, development option A included 217 apartment units and about 5,700 square foot of retail. Development B or number two in the analysis included some lesser apartments, 176 apartments, but the same amount of retail. So there are two options that we looked at from a development standpoint. So with that, Jason, I guess I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Matt. I'm going to share with you two slides very briefly on the fiscal impact. I did not have Mr. Babett join me this evening, but I, we did share with the two planning commissions, the full fiscal impact study. But a project of this nature tends to generate surplus tax revenues beyond the services it consumes. And we expect there to be a $377,000 fiscal surplus across the township, the borough and the school district. As you can see in the number shown in this version, which is for the 217 unit version. We're anticipating a surplus of the township of $22,000 a year to the borough of about $12,000 a year. But to the school district, 340,000. And that's largely driven by the demographics of of our resident population that tends to have households with relatively few school age children. Same analysis, but this is with the slightly less dense version at 176 units. But again, a $300,000 overall positive impact for the three jurisdictions. So the last point I I guess I really wanted to share is, of course, going back to where we started, which is the zoning. And today, of course, the township township zoning is limited industrial. The borough zoning is presently central industrial. However, there is proposed an overlay district for the this gateway corridor. And we have had a chance to review the the recent draft of that. And we, the jewel box building, as I previously described, it largely conforms to that overlay district. But there are a couple of things that we would want to raise as potential areas for zoning relief. But conceptually, the building But conceptually, the building, its density, its coverage, the way the building is oriented towards the street, the way in which it is contributing to this new planning vision of North Broad Street, I think, suggests that our project would be very much, you know, in the spirit and largely to the letter of that proposed ordinance. So with that, I, I, I welcome your comments and I look forward to our conversation. Thank you.
I have a question about the traffic going back to that.
Sure.
Are we talking about three lights and three blocks?
So we're not, just, yeah, just to be clear, we're not, so this project, we're not proposing to add any new traffic lights. The traffic light I was referencing is a new traffic light that is being provided at the intersection of Broad and Atkinson as part of the intelligencer redevelopment. That is a new traffic light. I'm sorry?
There will be a new light, Judy.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah. I have a question for you, either Matt or Jason. So you're going to be queuing people going northbound on Broad to make a left-hand turn into your property. There are people that are going to be coming out of your property in the same driveway and either making a right hand or will be me, a left-hand turn trying to cross traffic. I, I mean, I have serious concern about that bottleneck that's going to occur at that because you have a single entry point and, and exit points, the same spot.
Right. So I, I, no, I was gonna say, I, I can appreciate that. I don't, I don't view that as any other, how any other driveway operates. Most driveways that you see have one lane in and one lane out that serve, you know, all four movements, whether it's a right in, left in, right out, left out. I think the important aspect of this is the fact that we're able to accommodate the vehicles that are queued to make a left in to the proposed development, at the same time accommodate the vehicles that want to make a left onto Atkinson. I think that's important. That allows the traffic to continue to flow on Broad in both directions without being impeded by those vehicles. Now, obviously.
I'm concerned, Matt, my concern is, you know, first thing in the morning when everybody's getting up and going to work or in the evening coming home, you got 175 apartment units. Conceivably 175 people trying to get out onto Broad Street. What percentage is going to make a left? What percentage is going to make a right? I don't know. But it's a concern to me. It's, it's a, it's a big load on, on an already loaded street, in my opinion.
Right. No, and that, and it's a great question. It's, it's a valid concern. And I think that's one of the reasons why we wanted to point out the actual traffic load on some of those major corridors in and out of the borough and the township. In Broad Street right now, if you look at it, I mean, I, I, I'm not telling you that you have anything you guys don't know, but you look at Broad Street, it's a two-lane roadway for most part until you get into the borough, then it kind of widens out a little bit, got some shoulders, we've got a lot of vacant ground through that area. When you compare it to something like State Street, when you compare it to something like South Main Street, where it's more dense, a lot more driveways, more intense type development. The, one of the things that we tried to do too in this preliminary analysis, be somewhat conservative from a traffic perspective, traffic numbers. I, I fully believe in, in, in doing this for the past 26 years, I fully believe that there is a complete change in traffic volumes and traffic generation for uses due to what we've experienced in the pandemic. I personally, having a business that employs almost 200 individuals, will be looking to reduce my office square footage, my footprint when the time arises and the opportunity arises. Because we have found that working remotely and working from home is more efficient. It's better for the environment, reduces the carbon footprint, so on and so forth. And a lot of the people that I talk to feel the same way. So when we go through and crunch our numbers, and everyone has probably seen a traffic study in the past where we generate the amount of traffic by development, I truly do not think that we're going to see those levels of traffic for a long, long time. I think everyone has been comfortable working at home. So yes, so we want to be conservative. We want to assume there's a significant portion of people that still drive. However, my belief is that, and we want to plan for that, but my belief is I don't, we're not going to see those type of levels of traffic anymore because the, the, the ability to work from home, the ability to bank from home, the, the, the ability to order online, those type of things. If people want to live in an area where they don't need their car, they can get out of their car and they can walk to the shops, they can walk to the borough, they can walk to the park across the street, those type of things.
The, the other concern I have is on, on the commercial side, obviously it's loading and unloading deliveries, vehicles that are bigger than a car.
Right.
I, I didn't see Jason, any loading docks or any, you have one entry and one, you know, an entrance and exit with some parking. How, how would you plan or how, how do you see the vehicular traffic for delivery? Say it's a restaurant or say it's, I don't know, a coffee house or coffee shop.
So if, I don't know if I can share my screen. Again, let me refer to a plan. I shared earlier. Let me start with this image. It's not letting me show the full screen. Can you see this rendering of the side view of the building?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So one, one of the things that we've been considering is because we're going to need to have loading space, not just for commercial reasons, but also for the residents coming in and out and deliveries is that in, in the space between the two buildings, we would pull up, we'd create a pull-off area for loading that would be a protected space that would then allow for the, the moving van or the delivery van to then back up and K-turn back out to North Broad. So that would be the, the principal space for that kind of loading. And I would anticipate that the deliveries would occur at times that are off-peak for the use. So there is the possibility that smaller vehicles could take advantage of parking spaces in front of the retail space.
How about furniture delivery?
It would be similar. I think that, you know, the, the reality of, of Amazon deliveries, UPS, FedEx is something that we're all grappling with and which is informing the design of all of the communities Arcadia does. And so we, we're going to need to establish that those vehicles can make the turns, that there's a place for them to, to pull off and unload. And so as we get further into land development, we would be very pleased to provide that analysis.
Could you talk about the parking you put on the side to backup parking with the park? And how people are going to access the park and where they're parking, since that's part of the elements?
Absolutely. So, so first of all, our residents will each be afforded with private parking in the, in the structured garage that we would construct. So typically speaking, a project like this would provide a dedicated space for each bedroom. So a bigger unit, a two-bedroom unit would have two, two spaces. Smaller units would have just a single space. And then we would also provide for guest parking as well as the parking as per your zoning ordinance for the commercial uses. So all of those spaces would be reserved spaces for the private residents and private patrons of the commercial use. For the community members who are interested in enjoying the park that the borough is now constructing, there, we would be providing additional on-street spaces on North Broad. So on our side, I believe it's in fact five spaces that Bernardman has shown in their plan. The developer across the street of the Intel has shown a whole series of diagonal back-in spaces there on Atkinson. But additionally, the county's garage, in my experience, is at, at a very low occupancy level. And I think is available to the public on weekends when community members may wish to enjoy the park. So I think this is actually an area of the borough which has very ample parking resources.
So the parking in front is not for the restaurant per se, you're thinking for the park?
It would be, so it's, it's not going to be assigned to any given use. So it would be much like an on-street space in the heart of the borough. Whether it needs to be metered is a question that we could deal with downstream, but it would be available for any users in that area, park users or commercial users.
And, and just to clarify, the, the, the back-end angled parking that we were showing that I referred to earlier in, on Atkinson, that back-end parking is being provided by, or is part of the redevelopment of the intelligencer building. And again, I think it would serve the same purpose of being open to the public and likely utilized by some of the, the patrons of the park.
Right.
I think a resident has a question. The resident listed as Kim.
Yes. Hi, thank you for taking my question. Actually, two questions. One, if, if appropriate, I'd be curious for any and all perspectives on what it means to be ramping up rental, rental residents to such a large degree. I'm a long-term homeowner in the borough and it changes the, the, the nature of the residency. I'm curious in any perspectives on that. That's our first question.
Well, thank you. The Doylestown is, as you all Dallas appreciate, like one of the the nicest main street communities in the Philadelphia region. We, places like Doylestown have generally not supplied new rental housing over the last several decades. Many of the historic boroughs of the Philadelphia region have generally not seen much new construction in general over the last, you know, 20, 30 years. Doylestown is somewhat unusual in that, as you, as you may have seen earlier in my presentation, the two pioneering TND projects, Belvedere and Lantern Hill, were introduced in the last 20 years. So as a result of the lack of new rental housing, there's pretty extraordinary demand from, from residents seeking to be within walking distance of, of everything that Doylestown has to offer. A building like this, as you might imagine, it's very expensive to construct. The rents are going to be very high. So we're anticipating rents that are starting at $2,000. We, we may have some studio units where, which were a little bit more affordable, but by and large, these are rents that are, you know, at a very high level. And, you know, we certainly are intending to operate this property at the highest possible level so that it is not at all a detriment, but a true asset for the borough and the township.
Thank you. This is Larry, Kim's husband. Just a couple of other questions. First of all, I appreciate your firm taking a, a look and trying to blend, you know, the design into the, into the area. So, you know, yes, for me coming down, I live literally right around the corner. I walk my dog down that area all the time on Broad Street, over to Lantern Hill and, and throughout various areas. So that being said, I, and I appreciate the studies that are done. But my biggest concern probably be, it's either between the number of units that are going in with the height of the complex and the environmental impact with regards to that being so much, would it land? As to what's going to, you know, what's the trade-off, you know, that those fields, the, the trees are going to come down. I realize you're going to do greenery and stuff, but it's not going to be an equivalent match. Nothing ever is. So, but probably my biggest concern is, you know, the height and the number of residents that are coming in. Because no matter what the impact study says, you know, come walk with my dog, you know, on a weekend at night. And it's crazy. We have people coming out of the county garage that are only supposed to make a left-hand turn. You can put as, or correct, sorry, a right-hand turn and they make left-hand turns to go down our street. So we can put as many signage as we want up. But people, it's just their human nature that they're going to do what they want to do, unfortunately. So ideally from my perspective, I, I would like to, I'd say, I mean, I understand the cost that's associated and, and the break even points and everything else. But ideally I would love to see a, a layer knocked off, one level knocked off from the aesthetics and just from the number of, you know, potential residents, renters, traffic and everything else that would be coming into the, into our neighborhood. So thank you for your time.
Well, thank you very much, Larry, for your question. And, you know, we definitely want our project to be a good neighbor. So it's really important that both in its design and its impacts that that it feels like Doylestown, that we're not doing something which really feels like we're, you know, upsetting the character of this area. One, one thing I'll just say just about, you know, the density question is that, you know, the density, I think of in two ways. One is as somebody who considers himself an environmentalist that when we can provide housing in a land-efficient way within walking distances of the places people love, we take pressure off of the peripheral areas that should be preserved. So I'm a big believer that when we redeploy forlorn industrial property and turn it into something which is productive for the community, but also takes pressure off of environmentally sensitive lands and farmlands, that that's, that's a real win, not just for the site, but for the region. The other thing is just with the density of the project, you know, the, I want to make sure that when we approach this project, that there's nothing that we're doing is going to compromise the quality of the project. So I recognize very much in our work as planning commissioners and reviewing projects, we, we can focus very much on the quantity of development. And I just want to make sure that we look at the project in a way that ensures that its qualitative aspects are, are the most important. But as you could see in my presentation, I showed two different potential density ranges. So we're flexible and are open to input on that topic.
Jason, I just wanted to ask about the height question. What, how is this in relationship to the courthouse garage and the courthouse building? Those buildings are, you know, what, you know, just to give us some perspective in that neighborhood for the height of what you're proposing.
So the, the height of the borough portion is, is four stories. You may have seen in the rendering that we put some windows up in the gable. And those are really just meant to be loft spaces for, for those, for those units. So it's a four-story building in front. The township building would be five stories. So I, I have to confess that I'm not familiar enough with the courthouse to tell you how, how tall that is. But by comparison, center square, which is the apartment tower just down the road, is about 90 feet tall. And I think that the Wesleyian House living is over 100 feet tall. So our building, we estimate the township portion would be between 55 and 65 feet.
Okay. I, I was just, do you know the height of the, the development of the intelligencer property?
I, I think that their building is very similar in scale. I think it's four stories in the front and five stories in the back.
Can I ask a question? As you talked about density, I believe you had shared with the township that there would not be any outdoor patio or anything connected to the apartments for the township side. But you did mention a rooftop. Is that going to be a gathering place for? Is that what you were thinking?
So the, let's see if I can share the screen. I can show it more clearly. So in, in this image, this gives a glimpse of a private interior courtyard. So this courtyard is in fact on the second story. So there's parking beneath it. But it's an outdoor space that would be open to the residents of, of the apartment building. So we intend to manage the complex, both the borough portion and the township portion as a single entity. And so this would be the, the most amenitized outdoor space. And, but, you know, it obviously we're preserving open space in the back, but we don't intend for that open space to be active recreation. In some ways, because we're so proximate to this new Borough Park, we're really hoping that, you know, our proximity to the park is, you know, considered. we're really hoping that, you know, our proximity to the park is, you know, considered to be, you know, a desirable amenity, though it's open to the general public.
Mr. Duckworth, if I may?
Yes.
I'm curious, looking through the analyses that were prepared by Mr. Babett, I'm curious about your time horizons relative to the intensity of higher-density development already occurring in the borough. And I must confess with the capacity increase ultimately being proposed to broad dwelling units, I'm somewhat concerned about market saturation. Is that something you could speak to at all?
Yeah, absolutely. So we, we would, our, our desire would for this, would be for this project to to only begin to rent after the intel project is complete. We, we, we think that while there's no doubt that there's substantial demand for both projects, I mean, the market research that we've done, you know, suggests that that Doylestown's demand for this type of housing will not be saturated with these, these projects. However, we think it makes most sense for the projects to come online in an orderly way. So our hope would be to come on the heels of the redevelopment of the intelligencer.
Jason, did you take into account the other two projects that you have when you're doing the market saturation?
Yeah. I mean, obviously the, the other two that I'm involved with, one's a 12-unit for-sale project. So it's, it's, it's a really, it's a different buyer profile. But the, the first project, 263 North Main, you know, our hope is that that project is, is well underway and fully, fully occupied before either the intel or this property were to come online. That, that first project is also a very, it's compared to both the intel and this and 280 North Broad, it's quite small, it's just 59 units.
Okay.
Can you address the status of the intel redevelopment? And we've seen in the paper, there's a proposal for Doylestown Shopping Center also. And I didn't know whether there, what's the feasibility of that getting approved in the borough and how that contributes to the traffic in the corridor?
We, we've seen the intel development as a planning commission and I think we've seen it in two forms. When the Quarkins presented it the first time and then this later, latest developer. We have, we have not seen, nor have we been involved in any discussions on the shopping center as a planning commission. So.
There is, there is no formal proposal, as I understand it, contrary to expert reporting by Doylestown Patch.
And so I, I would, I would defer to anybody in borough staff if they have any information, but we as a planning commission haven't seen anything.
Gus, the status of that is we obviously had received a presentation from the shopping center and their development partners. We, we heard what they had to say. We've subsequently given them some feedback as far as our concerns and issues and perhaps the boundaries and limitations of what we think that we can absorb. The borough is under tremendous pressure right now with multifamily product and we're at a point where we're, we may be at the tipping point and we're going to have to start turning a lot of stuff down. So we don't know what the status of those projects are at this point. We have no formal submission as far as the shopping center, but we do know what we can and, and can't take in town at this point. And we do have concerns about the magnitude of these multifamily developments coming in. That said, the intelligencer project that we've been working on for three or almost four years at this point, we believe that they are in the land development, the resubmission phase right now. And we, we hope that that's going to be under construction in the next six to 12 months. The traffic on the Broad Street corridor is something that is obviously of tremendous concern to us that that has a limitation as to what the, the corridor can carry at its current capacity. It currently is the main access to the Broad Street, to the parking garage on Broad Street for the courthouse. In fact, we've went out of our way to put signage on the bypass to focus traffic on Broad Street for the courthouse traffic. So any conversation we have about, about Broad Street and traffic and development, it has to be catching the fact that, that the main user on that corridor, the main anchor store, if you will, is the Bucks County Courthouse parking garage and several thousand parking booths. So Gus, that's the status of the, of the corridor developments right now. And I think any conversation we have about land uses in this corridor has to be tempered by the fact that we have a corridor that perhaps needs some careful study and examination to make sure that we're not, we haven't reached our tipping point with, with this particular roadway.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I really have a concern about the, the volume of traffic that we're going to be introducing to that corridor based on all the developments that are being proposed. So I.
So, and, and again, I, I completely understand. When we did the traffic study for the intelligencer building, we proposed a certain area to, to look at and based on feedback from borough staff, we actually expanded that area and kind of looked at the corridor itself, you know, all the way down from, from Main Street up to the bypass to incorporate all of those main roadways and, and developments that exist in that area to kind of look at that holistically. And my thought would be is that if we are able to continue to move forward through this process, we would continue that, that traffic planning and look at the corridor in general, as, as Phil had said, and come up with some ideas on what could be done, if anything, additional needs to be done through that corridor as part of this development, just like we did on the intelligencer building where I believe that the end product is going to be very nice.
If I can add what Judy said, so if you're coming out 280 and you take a left, there's three lights to get to 611 that you're going to hit and Shady Retreat is where the pediatrician's office is. And then we have to be mindful, there's a senior center there as well. So we'll have those, right? And then there's some discussion about some other things that maybe running into Shady Retreat too. So, okay. What? And everyone's, everyone, intention is everyone is going to be sharing and using that park, that that's going to serve the intelligencer building, the community and 280.
Correct. So.
Park again?
Uh, I think it was at four acres? The Borough Park? Karen? Bill?
Bill knows.
Three and a half.
Three and a half. One of the things I do want to point out though is, and I think it was one of the slides that, that Jason had shown with respect to the zoning of the property. This property can be developed and the property will generate traffic. So it's a matter of how we can work together with both the borough, the township to, to kind of look at, like I said, the Broad Street corridor in general and, and see what things can be done or need to be done. I know this, the, the bicyclists in this area are a very important aspect to the borough and the township. I know the pedestrian activity and facilities are very important to the borough and the township. But to put it in this perspective, based on the zoning that exists on that property today, you could essentially put a, a drive-through bank up front and a office building or medical office building in the rear. And you would likely generate more traffic than what is being proposed and other development options that Jason has presented tonight. So I just want to, and again, it's not, not threatening or anything of that nature. It's, the reality is the property is zoned. It allows for office buildings, it allows for commercial uses. And if those uses were to be developed in this property by right, you could likely, or would likely experience more traffic associated with those uses. Any other questions?
I actually have a question. So Jason, can you put your site plan back up? Because I, I'm, and I appreciate Matt's comments about the fact that there are a variety of uses that would be permitted and may generate more traffic. But my concern is literally the, the turning, the access points here and what, what we're, what we're looking at, which the access is offset from Atkinson. And I don't know if it's possible, but it seems, it seems like a second access point would certainly benefit. I don't know where you can get. Now, I live close to this location and I use North Broad Street almost every day. So this is the world I live in. I think your project from an aesthetic is, is very pleasing. I like the detail that you've taken into creating something that assimilates with the borough and, and pays homage to our, our, you know, heritage and historic, you know, but, but I am concerned that we, we're going to stress this point significantly. And, you know, is there something else that can be thought through to provide better access?
And, and that's a great, that's a great comment, Kim. And that, and that's probably one of the first things that I looked at when Jason sent me the property. Where could we locate the access? We wanted to make sure that we weren't causing more harm than good in that regard. And quite honestly, if we had the ability to locate opposite Atkinson, that would, that's a no-brainer. Absolutely create the fourth leg of the signal. However, the property line doesn't extend all the way to Atkinson to the point we'd even be able to have an access point there. So then we went back to the drawing board and said, all right, well, since we don't have access to Atkinson, what else could we do? Do we put the driveway closer to the new signalized intersection? Probably not. We want to locate that far as away from that signal as possible to give as much room for the vehicles that are entering and exiting that property as you can. So we pushed the driveway further up the plan along that property line, which kind of puts us in the center of Atkinson in the, in the driveway for the intelligencer. And like as, as I mentioned earlier, normally I would have concern when you have an offset driver like that, if someone's making a left out of 280 North Broad and someone's making a left out of the intelligencer at the same time. However, as part of the intelligencer, if you recall, we're restricting the lefts out of that driveway. So that's a right-in, right-out, left-in-only driveway. We're going to force everyone to exit out onto Atkinson and utilize the traffic signal to make a left. Unfortunately, we don't have that ability to do that here and try to look at a balance as to where that access would best be served. Now, could you possibly provide another, a right-out only on North Broad Street down on the bottom portion of the development near the signal? Possibly. But I also agree that that would probably be an issue with respect to its location relative to the signal and then trying to design it so that it would only be right out and no one would try to make illegal turns in and out of that driveway. So it's really, it's a balancing act. However, that's not to say that in the future, if the property below Jason is ever redeveloped, then I think this design, the way this site is laid out would allow for discussions to occur with respect to some sort of shared access that would be the fourth leg of that intersection. There's nothing that this project would do to preclude that based on the layout that we've shown tonight.
Can I ask one more question? I do love the static. It's beautiful. And I do, I agree on like how it pays homage to our area. We had neighbors from Belvedere. Was there any thought about a boutique community that sort of mimics Belvedere? I mean, Belvedere's homes are highly desirable. They're large and many people, when you look at our demographics, who want to downsize from neighborhoods but still have children, maybe in middle or high school, don't want that responsibility or jobs have changed or they're working from home, that would lessen the, the, maybe the, the number of homes. You can still have the beautiful aesthetic and still maybe financially be ahead, but you know, it would be like a complimentary boutique community. That was my only idea.
No, I, I, Nancy, I really like that idea. And I'll, I'll tell you that we, we went through several iterations of a plan to look at luxury for-sale townhomes like Belvedere for the site. And so ultimately, there were two issues. The first really being environmental because, because of the contaminants, because of the industrial, the volatile organic compounds that are related to the former chemfab use. We are able to provide better environmental controls in a multifamily setting than we can in a for-sale setting. And our view was that it was potentially, it was, it was, it would impair our marketability of those units. We're actually very confident that you can sell for-sale product in this kind of transitional environment. But it was just, how would we ensure that people aren't going to dig in the backyard or that we would have appropriate ventilation for any vapors? So, but the, but the second thing was also just that the, the lovely sort of street pattern that Belvedere enjoys is in part a function of, of its shape that our property, unfortunately, because it's narrow like a bowling alley, the only way you could really lay out townhouses would be in a relatively repetitive pattern that I think may not be as pleasing as what, what we showed you tonight. But, you know, very much we'd be interested in, in looking at creative options that may not be quite what we showed you tonight. So I, I want, I want everyone to leave with the idea that, you know, we are open to input and looking to find ways to have this project be the best fit it can for the corridor and the township and the borough.
And maybe they're boutique condos because, you know, people are, we have a lot of pharma people who rent because they go live somewhere else for a while and, and different things. So maybe there's a way to create them less the death city and still, you know, keep the values of like a Belvedere and, and allow those types of opportunities.
Thank you.
And Nancy, I have intentionally kept my mouth shut tonight and not said anything about, you know, zoning and the ordinances and things like that. You know, at this point, this is a planning discussion where Jason is. Doylestown Borough Property is a little bit different. The Doylestown Township Property, you know, as Matt said, it's owned industrial. And even what, what Jason's describing tonight with the apartments, there is no, no box in the Doylestown Township zoning ordinance that this fits into, even outside of, you know, the LI zoning, even if we just ignore that for the moment. So I think if we're all talking about, you know, planning and being creative, you, you can be because we're going to be kind of building something that's different than both what the township ordinance contemplates and, and what's contemplated for this property. So, so you can think like that.
I just ask one quick question. And I'm not sure if the, Jason, you can answer this, or maybe folks from the borough. Would children who reside, who would be living at 280 North Broad get transportation to school or would they be walkers?
Not certain.
Based on what I know about bus patterns and they almost certainly would be bussed. At least it would be available to them.
I thought the, I thought the state law was if they were within somebody, whether it was less than a mile or something like that. So I'm just not sure. I'm just asking because that certainly could impact traffic and everything like that, you know, at key times of the day.
I don't believe they're close enough. And I, I'm basing that on what I know about certain neighborhoods who I know are bust and and judging it against the distance. So my best guess right now, and it's an educated one, would be that they, they would be bust.
Okay. Thank, thank you.
Just confirm for me is the township and borough line goes straight down Broad Street? I think it does, but I'm not certain of that.
No, it, no, the township and borough line does not go straight down Broad Street.
It does not.
No. Jason, can you go back to the, yeah? Jason, can you go back to the, yeah, there it is.
From the side towards 611. Is it, is it along the center line of the road or is entire Broad Street in the Borough? Both sides?
The, the majority of Broad Street's in the Borough, I believe.
So the, the dotted line that Jason's put up for us, everything that's in front of it, close to Broad Street is in the Borough. It's, you get into the township once you go within the dotted line.
Um, Jason, if you could put the zoning map, which you're probably getting to do already, because you're both saying correct things. Greg, it is down the center of the line when you get farther closer to 611?
Right. That's correct.
But i- in the vicinity of this property, the line is offset back from Broad Street because the frontage is in the Borough.
Got it, yeah. Just meant from this edge of this site to the 611 bypass that, that it's split between the Borough and the Township. So whatever occurs along this corridor is going to impact basically both sides of the roadway. So there needs to be some cooperation between the Borough and the Township on any type of improvements going forward. And having a plan for a long-range plan for how the improvements might occur along Broad Street as other sites get developed or redeveloped.
Yeah, and, and there are some constraints along Broad Street on, on the Township side and some on the Borough side, but a lot on the Township side as we get to where the old Fisher Hughes Van Leeen building was and then the other Tilly property and where the creek comes across. There, there's some, there, there's some natural features that will need to be dealt with.
Well, the creek would be a major one if you're trying to widen the road.
Correct.
The last Broad Street gateway study was accomplished in year 2000. Is that right, John? John Davis?
I believe that was the last time it was looked at in a.
And, and it's pretty much, it's pretty much completed. You know, the concept pretty much has been done. So we, we'd have to do another restudy of it.
I wouldn't say it's been done, Gus, but certainly it's, it's, it's well underway. I mean, what you're seeing either that has been built or is in.
In the process of being built.
In the process, there's not a lot that's happened just on the town, the west side, I suppose. The Township side is still fairly intact in terms of some of those quasi-industrial properties like the store and lock and the Thompson facility. And then, you know, of course, Tri-Borough and, Tri-Borough and Philly Rivet have evolved but are still.
Right.
Right, and, and the township.
Called them quasi-industrial.
And the Township has seen people come in with inquiries and floating, you know, just basic, very generic plans and options for the other properties that are either vacant or underutilized between this one and 611 in the LI district. Over the last four or five years, there have been a number of people with inquiries. So the expectation is that as property becomes more and more valuable to be developed, that those properties will be developed also. So that needs to be put into the equation also.
I, I will say that the, I'll speak for the 1997 comprehensive plan that had a heavy component about the corridor and then kind of served as a jumping off point for the 2000 study. It focused very heavily the, the, the properties that were, that had everyone's attention at that time were on the eastern side. It was the Car-Tex development that became Lantern Hill. It was the Mrs. Paul's development that became Belvedere. It was the PennDOT facility and yard and it was the intelligencer property. Those just seemed, I suppose, trying to transport myself back, seemed to be the properties that were primed for redevelopment at the time. So we may well kind of be, you know, you know, ending a phase one and, and, and starting a phase two.
Is the current zoning for the Intel property, is that like a TND? Or is there an overlay that you're using for other parcels other than Intel?
That, that's industrial zone right now, Greg. We're looking, we're looking at an overlay for it.
An overlay.
That's just part of the proposal.
That is.
No other commercial or industrial areas or parcels that are in that vicinity are going to have that overlay then?
I'm sorry.
You, you said that the Intel will be an overlay district, but the overlay district is not going to expand into any of the other commercial zoning or planned industrial areas in the, in the Borough at this point?
Site by site, right?
It's site by site, okay.
There, there is no proposal to expand it beyond that site right now.
At this point, okay, got it.
Just, and Greg, you'll recall from, from Lantern Hill, obviously, that the, that, that developed as an overlay as did, as did Belvedere, the TNDs.
Yeah, I, I remember that, but I didn't know that there was any change in the.
Well, I guess they were, they were technically a rezoning, so I'm.
There's some rezonings basically, okay, got it, thanks.
So I have one more question for Jason, and this may be a little premature as well. But given some of the setbacks and the proposed, let's call it a commercial restaurant-type venue on the first floor of the, the Borough, the building that's proposed for the Borough, clearly it's a little early for landscaping plans, but is there any envision to street trees? Because with this corridor potentially changing from a heavier industrial use to more of a mixed-use residential, we want to make sure that as a gateway, there is, there is attention being paid to restoring our tree-lined streets and, and, and providing that, that landscape to create the, the proper streetscape.
Kim, thank you. I agree wholeheartedly. And let me try to point out a couple of the landscape elements that we've envisioned. But clearly the ideas need to be developed much more. And, you know, my, my ambition would be to ensure that in some ways, we have the unified concept for the landscape of, of the North Broad Corridor. But you can see here, here, here are shown three, at least three street trees. And then, then, then the trees then come along the side of the building. We're also proposing trees that would demarcate the boundary between us and Mr. Becker's property there to the west. And there's also landscape details shown for essentially the planning strip verge space between the sidewalk and, and curb. And would certainly welcome further input. But for me, one of the most, you know, beautiful ways to enter an historic town is where you have symmetry in the street, street pattern and that there's a canopy that's been formed by the trees as they mature over the street. So hopefully we can coordinate with our neighbor across the street to, to ensure we get that effect.
Can I ask another question?
Yes.
Sure. The retail space you're talking about, so there would be none in the back where the Township is, correct?
No, yeah, the retail would be on the Borough portion. We think that that visibility is essential for the success of, of the merchant.
And it's going to be just one or multiple? Because I do think about, we are so attached to our local merchants. And obviously we all want to continue to patronize them and, and improve their success. Is it, is it one or multiple?
So we, we haven't determined at this point. But I would love, we've been interviewing microbreweries. So we've talked to all the local players around Doylestown at this point, trying to explore their interest to move into a larger, more modern space. And so that's, that's a bit of a fantasy of mine here. But, you know, we are talking about a building that is years from its realization. So it's a little early for me to say, but 56,000, 5,600 square feet is a lot of space. And I personally think it would be best if it's two smaller users rather than one big user.
Yeah. And one more question, and because I'm not an expert. So if you're, you in a apartment above the Borough side, your car is still parked in the Township side, correct?
Right, that's right. Yeah, so.
I don't know how, from a tax perspective, if there's any issue, like that's a little, it's just interesting.
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, I think that the assessor will actually place a value on the structured parking. So that Mr. Babbitt did consider that in his analysis. But the apartment located in the Borough would be assessed and would be eratable of the Borough.
Jason, you had said that you consider yourself a bit of an environmentalist. And I know the Borough and, both the Borough and the Township have been trying to put forth ordinances and, and, and move forward with a lot of environmental incentives. And, and, and I think the, the county as well is coming out with some incentives for, for developers to develop with environmental, environmental impacts in mind. So are you thinking of doing anything as far as solar panels? Any type of, any type of energy type of conservation? Any of those types of?
I, so the answer is yes. It's still early for us to say, but obviously these gabled roofs are, you know, an ideal place to locate solar panels. And it's pretty typical anymore for the tops of these structured parking garages to also do the same. So, no, we'd be very interested in that. And certainly if, you know, there's incentives for that in the ordinance, all the better. But no, that's, that's clearly, we clearly need to wean ourselves from fossil fuels. And if our building can be a step in that direction, we're open to that.
You've got a great opportunity for geothermal in, in this location, in this kind of density. Something to look into.
High water table.
Yeah.
Jason, just one quick question, follow-up on the like sustainability and energy issues. On the prior presentation you made to the Township, but on this one today too, you were clear to point out that the parking would be open to the sky, that the top level? Would, would you be amenable to something where it was, there was a cover on top of the top deck and that was possibly solar or something? Or were you tied to the open?
I, it's, I'm flexible. So I, I want to make sure everyone understands that this is, we haven't even filed a real sketch plan application. So it's just wonderful that you've all convened to consider something that's pre-skinch plan. But very much so, details like that, Judy, such as how we would handle the roof of the structured garage, you know, we, you know, we're open to discussing. And, no, I mean, one of the things, you know, I, no one's asked me the stormwater question. So I'm not going to go there, but that's a whole nother area of complexity that.
You just did.
Okay.
We were good not to go there yet.
Right, so we're going to need, we're, we're going to need to think about, you know, the role of the rooftops in multiple of these issues. So, but that is, you know, requires further engineering that we haven't yet worked out.
So Jason, what are your next steps? Where, where do you see this going next? And what kind of timeline are you looking at?
So I don't have a fixed timeline. I'm open to feedback as to what the most appropriate next, next step would be. And certainly I'm happy to confer with your staff, you know, after this today. But probably, you know, once we've considered some of the issues raised tonight, we should actually do a formal sketch plan. And maybe we would, you know, offer our thoughts on an approach to zoning. But I think there's many people on the Zoom call tonight who probably have their own thoughts on what might be the best approach to zoning. I don't want to be presumptuous to say we know the right answer, but we would certainly welcome that input. So a formal sketch plan is probably something that we could file in the next 60 days if that was encouraged.
Well, I think from a Township standpoint, we've got some, you know, thinking to do about the zoning issues and where we would like to see that, whether that's something that we deal with as a, as a change or an overlay or, you know, I, I'm not sure what, we haven't really had that discussion yet. So I think we need to, to bring that up for our next meeting, for our February meeting before we would, it would be fair for you to talk sketch plan yet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from anybody?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you very much for allowing the, all of us to ask questions and the public. Thank you to the public for your input. Judy, let's not make this a habit, but we're probably going to have to get together future presentations on, on this corridor. So I'm, I'm pleased and I welcome the collaboration. Obviously it impacts both of us. The Borough and, and, you know, the Borough is going to get the majority of the traffic, but you guys are going to get some headaches too, so.
Well, it's an exciting, it's an exciting thing to be looking at, you know, new proposals for this land because it's, you know, it's definitely something that, that's needed. And, you know, we don't have that many parcels left.
Right, and, and we're always fighting that, you know, overdevelopment. And, you know, Phil is right, we're at a tipping point when it comes to the, to the volume of, of proposed rental units in that particular area. And I think, you know, from the Borough Planning Commission side, we, we probably need to do some, some discussion on that too. So I do appreciate the cooperation of both boards. So if there are no further.
Yep.
Yes.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you Sinclair for getting this together.
Yes, yes Sinclair, thank you.
Thank you Sinclair.
Only just.
Bye.
Well done Sinclair.
Thank you for your input on everything.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Nice quarantine beard, by the way.
Thank you.
No, it's not. It's awful. This is PennDOT, this is what PennDOT does to you.